Good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 17th, 2017 meeting of the Warrenton Board of Aldermen to order. Mayor Schluter is out for a short period of time due to some scheduled surgery. So as President of the Board, I will be conducting the meeting tonight. First order of business, would everybody rise please for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business will be approval of the consent agenda.
First item is the work session minutes from October 3rd, 2017, the regular and executive meeting minutes from October 3rd, 2017, and the special board meeting minutes from October 10th, 2017.
Any discussion on it? And I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sub move.
Second, the motion.
Motion by Alderman Miller, seconded by Alderman Schultz. Roll call, vote.
Alderman Delloy.
Yes.
Alderman Schultz.
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey.
Yes.
Alderman Costello.
Yes.
Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next item, we will be hearing from the public. If there's anybody who would like to come before the DS up here, and we ask that your comments be held to five minutes. Do we have anybody from the public? Okay. Hearing none, I will move on to Board of the Aldermen, Board of Aldermen comments. Any comments? Anybody got any issues? Nothing from the warden. I myself, since the mayor is absent, I have nothing. So now we'll move down to recommendation for underwriter for the pool bonds. We have Joy Howard here. She's going to take us through, I think, some of the -- you want to step up here, Joy?
Am I on? If I'm not, I don't know.
Yes, you are.
Okay. So I'm here to talk to you about where we're at as far as on the sale of general obligation bonds that are going to finance your new aquatic center. Basically, I'm assuming all of you heard the good news that you got an A-plus rating, and that's really super great. Because of you getting a good bond rating, we sent -- well, we sent out a request for proposal, and because of your good bond rating, we had a lot of interest in your issue. We received eight proposals, which is a very good number for this type of a transaction. Out of the eight firms that submitted proposals, the best proposal was from DA Davidson. They're located in Des Moines, Iowa, but they also have offices in Missouri, and they're very active in doing smaller Missouri kinds of transactions. They're -- I don't know if -- did you receive a copy of this spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know how much you want me to go through that, but you could see at the bottom the range of interest rates that we received. Now, the rate that they gave their offering to us was based on, at the time of their proposal, but we're not entering into a contract for about two or three more weeks. Your next council meeting is when there'll be a contract. So the rates that they have in their proposal are not firm final. They're indexed against a published scale that comes out every day, and if interest rates between now and the time that the contract is executed go up, their rates would go up. And likewise, if rates go down according to this index, then their rates would go down. And all of the eight firms, all of them submitted index proposals except for one, which I'm showing as the last proposal, because their rates weren't tied to anything. So having an index proposal is very competitive. You know that the rates that they give are firm and final, other than this market volatility. Now, it's not a variable rate. As soon as the contract is executed, which is going to be on November 7th, on that date, the rates will be firm and final. But I just wanted you to know that what you're seeing in this spreadsheet could change. Other than that, they also offered you a very short call date, which means if interest rates were to improve, you would be able to refund the bonds at a future date. Their proposed call date was in 2025, which was consistent with some of the proposals, but I think more than half were proposing 2027. And that is not a mandatory call date. That's a call date at your option. So if rates go down, and in the future you want to call some of the bonds, that would be the date when they would be callable. And other than that, I don't think I have any comments unless you have some questions.
Could you explain the difference between the interest rate with and without volatility?
Yes. Basically, as I said, these indexes that all the firms are using come out every day, but with a one-day lag. So if I'm doing a pricing today based on an index, I'm looking at yesterday's rates. So in the request for proposals, I told all of the firms, you know, we prefer an index, but if they want, I gave them 10 basis points of volatility to use at the time of pricing because of this day lag, and the market changes a lot. So some of the firms just didn't say anything. They were fine with the 10 basis points, but some of the firms gave up some of the 10 basis points that I offered to have more competitive proposals. So out of the 10 basis points I offered, DA Davidson is only taking two basis points. So to summarize that, if today, we were pricing today, and let's say that the index, instead of calculating it out to be 2.7 percent, they would be able to add on two basis points, which is the 2.72. But some of the firms were adding on a whole lot more than that.
So that's kind of like an upper limit?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you know any cities in Missouri that this company has worked with?
I've worked with them. I recently did a transaction for the city of Wentzville with them. But I think after -- when you get outside the St. Louis metro area, I think a lot of cities have worked with them. Me, not so much, because I tend to work more with the larger St. Louis metro cities.
So 2.7 seems to me to be pretty competitive.
Oh, my gosh. It's an incredibly good rate. This is really good timing in the market. Everybody thought that by now, rates were going to go way up, that the Federal Reserve's talking about increasing rates, but that hasn't happened. Basically, inflation has been much lower than was expected, and so rates have not gone up this year basically at all.
You mentioned the good work that Alston does, in particular Gabrielle, and what she did in getting this A-plus rating. Without putting you on the spot, but putting you on the spot, what do you feel like a ballpark of savings was in regard to the rate you received had we not had?
Well, first of all, Gabrielle did do an excellent job, but Terry did as well.
Well, I said, yeah.
I didn't hear her name. I wanted to make sure that she was not loved out. She did a super great job.
Maybe Gabrielle complained the most.
That could be. That could be.
Without question, Terry got a good staff.
The ratings are -- we could talk about really bad ratings, but there's a group of ratings called investment grade ratings. So the best rating in investment grade ratings is a triple-A rating, which you probably hear about a lot, because that's what the U.S. is always trying to hold on to, is their triple-A rating. The next group is double-A, then A, and then below that is triple-B. From one rating grade to another rating grade, there's usually anywhere between a quarter to a half a percent difference. And I gave you that number. I can't remember. We actually computed out what the interest rate differential was. Do you remember offhand?
I don't remember what it was.
I could -- I can almost take a -- it's for each quarter of a percent. I'll let you do the math, because I don't remember. Each quarter percent on a 20-year financing is about $32,000, and you can multiply that times seven, because you have almost 7 million. And that's going to take you really close to what the difference is. And that's at a quarter. Right now, it's probably a little bit more than a quarter percent. Did you work that out?
Not yet. I'm writing it down, so I can work it out later.
Hold on. I think I got a calculator.
CPA here.
I got a calculator on my phone. That doesn't qualify for anything.
Yeah, I remember. I emailed that to Terry, but offhand, I just --
And I shared it with them, but I don't remember.
That's not just the --
We thought it was 195,000. That's a real low conservative number.
That is -- that does sound perfectly right.
And it extended out and looked like a quarter million.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I recall.
That is correct.
That could be up to a quarter million savings.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Good work.
Any other questions? Okay, Joy, thank you.
I was not planning on staying for when you approved the resolutions, but I probably should just mention things about the resolution you're approving tonight. On November 7th, I had mentioned that. That's when you'll actually execute a contract for the sale, and you're going to pass the bond ordinance. Tonight, all you're doing is approving the selection of the underwriter, and the underwriter is required under all sorts of new Dodd-Frank kind of rules. They have to give you a letter disclosing things about their firm, indicating they're not your financial advisor, they're just an underwriter, they go buying cellular securities. And so all these disclosures they made are things that are required by law. So basically, you're selecting them as underwriter, and you're accepting their disclosures. You're not saying if their disclosures are right or wrong or anything. You're just accepting them. If something should happen between now and November 7th, if we don't come to terms, if they don't agree to the terms that are in their proposal, we could actually terminate working with them. There isn't anything in tonight's resolution that's binding. It's more of a intent resolution. So I thought I'd mention that, since I'm not going to be here when you read it.
Okay.
Thank you, Joy. Yes, and that resolution will be towards the end of the meeting tonight. Next item on the agenda is a request for extension for installation of the sidewalk for the Reether subdivision. Kim or Donna, do you all want to come up and talk about this?
It's pretty basic. We're just asking.
Did everybody read the letter?
I read the letter.
We're asking for the extension, but we haven't been able to get a contractor to build the sidewalk yet. And if it were up to me, I'd be asking you to request to not build the sidewalk again, because at this time, I don't know if you know, but it's no longer for sale. Mom and dad plan to move back. If I could offer you an easement for that, as we did for the rest of it, in place of building the sidewalk, that would be my preference. I don't know what Orville has to say about that, but...
Is the property already subdivided?
Yes.
So that's...
That was filed, I believe. Yes.
Okay.
And we don't have an option to do that under the law.
Not the way the code is currently written requires. We kind of stretched it a little bit to even do that other part of it, so we would have to revise the code.
So I'm back to number one, is extension to build the sidewalk.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
Then I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Kim. I'll entertain a motion to allow the extension, a 90-day extension to install sidewalks for the Reether subdivision.
Like a motion, we make the extension to 90 days. So that's going to be enough time.
Motion by Alderman Schultz. Do I have a second? Second by Alderman Delloy. Roll call, vote.
Question. So 90 days, when will the sidewalks due to be completed?
I would assume it would be 90 days from today.
October 29th is when it would be due.
Okay, so then we got November, December again. The only reason I'm asking is I don't think you want to install sidewalks in January.
Yeah, so you save weather hopes a lot.
There was one more thing I should have mentioned, and MoDOT came out to look at the ditch in between.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Yeah.
MoDOT came out this week, I believe, to meet with Dad about the drainage in the ditch outside of where you want the sidewalk built in front of their house. And if you build the sidewalk and the drainage doesn't get fixed, you're probably going to have a sidewalk with problems. So I'm not sure that you want -- I mean, we can build the sidewalk, but it's going to become your sidewalk with also drainage problems with MoDOT. So you may want to have them out there to fix this problem as well.
What was the ditch with a problem?
There's no drainage. It just says...
It just says...
There's not a ditch in the...
There's a ditch there, but the water doesn't go anywhere, from my understanding.
I mean, the reality -- I'm sorry for delaying the vote, but the motion is to extend it.
Right.
And so please don't misunderstand that this is a motion to not do it, because that's...
No, I understand. We understand we're responsible to build the sidewalk.
I get it. But the only I'm getting at is I don't think January is the time to build sidewalks. So I would simply offer, suggest, maybe to alter it to 180 days.
We're not going to oppose that.
But you need to understand that at 180 days, it's not not building a sidewalk, and that's something that was already determined at a previous meeting. So I just offer that might save us from doing this again.
Agreed.
That's something we can do real quick?
Yeah.
Change it from 90 to 180?
Make the motion.
amend the motion.
Yeah, the first and the second.
Would that...
Get a second vote on the motion to amend and then vote on the main.
Two motions?
Yeah.
That can with the other motion?
I'll withdraw the motion to extend it 90 days.
We'll make an amend the motion to approve the request for extension of 180 days to install sidewalks for the Reether subdivision.
You good with that?
Good with that.
Good with that?
Yes.
Who was Bob the second?
Do I have a...
I'll say it.
Okay. Same way. Motion by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Delloy, to approve the amended request for 180-day extension to install sidewalks for the Reether subdivision. A roll call, vote.
Alderman Schultz.
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey.
Yes.
Alderman Costello.
Yes.
Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Delloy.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Kim.
One, we just realized, and I should have caught it first. It's not Reether subdivision, it's Reether Estates. And it's not Reether Estates, it's 33.
Because you guys had to change it when you went to record it.
Right. The recording office. So just so you understand.
Right.
But the Reether Estates is the 33, because this is the 3.
Okay. Yeah, I remember there was a problem Brandon said when they were aware that it was very existed.
Just so we let it happen to you.
Well, yeah, it'll be fine.
We'll make sure it's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is bid for sanitary sewer extension for the West Interchange. We have John Kramer.
Good evening, John. It's good to see you all again. Eight must be the magic number for bids, because last Wednesday, we received eight bids for the sanitary sewer extension and the muffler on the motorcycle on set. It contained 24-unit prices and two alternate bids. The bids were very competitive. We had four that were very close to each other. The alternate bids were alternate one, change the pipe material that would be inside the casing pipe from ductile iron to PVC. And alternate two was to provide for an alternate means of boring. Alternate two uses a horizontal directional drilling technique. The low bidder is Coal Grading LLC. It's a well-known, family-owned firm. I've worked with them for many years. They did not bid on either of the alternates. When I asked why they did not, alternate one, the pipe material change, they didn't get prices from the supplier in time to submit it in their bid. As far to, related to the horizontal directional drilling, they have their own boring machine, and they have no interest in HDD. So they would have had to get a subcontractor to submit a bid, and they just didn't do it. But that being said, even without any addition or subtraction for alternates one and two for coal grating, they still low bid. I have checked them out. My experience with them was with Maas Grading. They, however, have been doing work for MSD for the last 10 years, and I have an affirmative recommendation from as much as you can get from MSD. It's the kind of thing, the recommendation you get from MSD is they didn't do anything wrong. You know how that has to be with them. So based on that, they do have 55 years' experience. I knew the dad, who has since passed, and I worked with him on projects 30 years ago. With that, I recommend that we provide notice of award to Coal Grading LLC in their low bid amount of $488,826.75.
So we would put alternate one and two on because they're enhancements, or they're not enhancements? So in other words, the question is, yeah, we agree that that's the one that we should sign, but do we want to take alternative three or alternative one?
Alternative one is just a different pipe material. The PVC should be cheaper. When I discussed that with him, he says he agrees it should be cheaper. So that's something we would discuss with him later, after the contract is signed by changeover.
But as a recommendation from the engineer, you're recommending we don't take any alternatives.
Right.
We just stay with the base bid.
Right. Just the base bid with him as a low bid.
So Mr. Kramer, I'm new to this board. So as I'm understanding this, then even with doing their own boring and not using a different pipe product that's less expensive, there's still $161,000, $173 under what we had budgeted?
Yes.
Six-10 is what was budgeted?
I don't know exactly what was budgeted.
The budget was 610,000.
Okay.
Which means you did a good job.
Thank you.
Or he inflated the budget so that he looked it.
You learn that from one man.
The guy calls that fluff.
Are you guys talking about this project?
And I, too, have known the Coal family for a long time. Nick was originally from New Valley, which is a good company, good reputation. Very good. I agree. Think we're lucky to have them.
Any other questions for John? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
At this time, then, I'll entertain a motion to award the sanitary sewer extension for West Interchange bid to Coal Grading LLC in the amount of $448,826.75.
It's a low bid.
488, isn't it?
448.
No.
John mentioned 488, but it was 448.
448.
If you'll look it up this month.
Sub move.
Motion by Alderman Costello. Second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Delloy. Roll call, vote.
Alderman Shel Harvey.
Yes.
Alderman Costello.
Yes.
Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Delloy.
Yes.
Alderman Schultz.
Motion carries six to zero. Again, thank you, John. Next item on the agenda is, whose voice? Is approval for destruction of records?
The following list that you have there is following the record retention schedule from the Secretary of State. We usually do this every September after audit.
Any questions for Melody on this, or anybody else?
No motion.
Hearing none.
Approved.
Request. I have a motion, Alderman Costello. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Alderman Schultz, to approve the following list of records to be destroyed. Roll call, vote.
Alderman Costello.
Yes.
Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Delloy.
Yes.
Alderman Schultz.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is a request to change zoning code to allow state license of family home daycares. This is presented by Ann Vaquero.
Anna. It's actually Anna, sorry.
Anna? State your name.
Hi, I am Anna Vaquero. I live, I'm not exactly sure what ward, but over by Lakeview Park. And what I'm asking today is kind of straightforward. Currently, how it sits, if I'm not mistaken, you can get a conditional use permit for your home, for home occupational uses, outside of R1, R2, and R3 zoning districts. But if you reside within those districts, you cannot apply for a state license to care for children in your home and get approved through zoning. And when I had spoken with Jack several times, thanks for bearing with me, he thought it best, instead of just outright asking for the amendment, because two ladies did try to amend this text two years ago, that I bring it to your attention first and sort of see if it would be something you would be interested in entertaining, or just sort of open the conversation. I know two years ago, the main points, and I did write up just a little statement and give it to you guys. I don't know if anybody had a chance to read it. But the main two arguments when the ladies tried to do this in 2015 was that firstly, it would be essentially a nuisance to neighbors. And to try to combat that and turn it into more of a positive discussion, I actually walked several neighborhoods in Warrenton and talked to people about this, just to get their opinion. And I did end up getting around, I'm not sure of the exact number, but around 120 people to sign a petition of sorts to state that they would accept the change and embrace it, or that they don't mind, or that they don't see it being a nuisance to their neighborhood or their daily lives. The second main argument from 2015, when they did try to push this, was that 10 children was simply too much for one person to handle inside of a home. And I did want to highlight that 10 kids is the max that you can have, but you still have to abide by the state statutes and rules for the ages of the children. So that's not saying, okay, you've got a state license, now we'll just, you can have 10 kids. That's saying if you follow these rules, and they are these ages, then you could have up to 10 children. That's kind of what I'm leading with. If you have any questions or concerns, I am here to answer.
Could we have counsel kind of give us an overview of the last time we went through this? Because there was a petition request that was rejected by P&amp;Z, and we had quite a bit of conversation relative to what the law allows, what the city allows. Could you refresh us on that?
Absolutely. To the best of my knowledge, and I want to, Jack, what is the split? You can have up to how many kids?
Up to four.
You can have up to four.
Unrelated.
Unrelated, without having a license at all.
Right. But you still get licensed? But you, you still get, you still get license through the state or you don't?
No.
Up to four? You don't?
You don't.
Okay. So you can have up to four and that's not considered a daycare in our code? So you can have up to four kids unrelated to your kids? So you can have more than just your kids? So if you have two kids, you can have up to four additional kids at your house and it's not licensed or not regulated by the city, right, Jack?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
So there is, there is an ability to have a daycare just in a smaller scale in the neighborhood. And so that was the first thing, because one of the things, there was information brought last time that I actually talked to the state contact person about the licensing. And, and basically what happened was, the, the project came through, it was very narrow streets, very limited parking. Some of the neighbors around came in and said, well, I don't want 10 kids playing in the backyard while I'm trying to relax. And, and you know, it wasn't really a nuisance per se, that the board really did not focus on whether it was a good idea or a bad idea, but just the logistics of that particular home in that particular area, that the street was too narrow and there was insufficient parking and traffic was going to be a concern, drop off and pickup. There was neighbors that came in and talked about it that really had a concern about the lot size being small and, you know, basically you're going to have this chain link fence and I'm going to see 10 kids playing in the backyard and the noise level and whatnot in a residential zone. Those were really the main issues that compelled the board to vote it down last time. We kind of tried to work with it to come up, we came up with some concept regulations for this conditional use permit, but one of the main things the board said after last time, after that discussion was, we really have to look at this neighborhood to neighborhood and keep it as a conditional use permit because the sizes and lots and the house proximities vary so much in the city.
If I recall right, too, the home was in cul-de-sac if I recall right, so you did have traffic issues.
You did have traffic issues. It definitely was, it was, you know, there was some, I think some of the, Alderman, I think you were one of them, Alderman Ock, that went out and looked at it to see the parking on a regular day and what the drop off pickup would be. There was some concerns because it basically would require, it would require parents to park on the street and there was already parking on the street. So that's what I recall for, from it. Jack, do you remember anything else that was an issue that's pretty accurate? And then you guys basically concluded, we want to take this up on a case-by-case basis because of that concern.
I mean, because whatever we decide, I still think it needs to be something that goes before P&amp;Z. So the P&amp;Z can make an assessment of the neighborhood to see if that's something that's appropriate. I mean, to me, I, I can't support anything short of that. I mean, that has to be part of it because we have an obligation to protect the, the people invested in homes, who invested in homes without the intent of having a business next door. Because nobody buys a home in a residential neighborhood and figures, oh, someday I'll have a business next door. They're buying in a residential neighborhood for the purposes of it being a residential neighborhood. So if we were to do anything with this, as a minimum, there still has to be P&amp;Z involved so the neighbors can come up and say, hey, I have an issue with this, or explain it to me, or whatever it is. So, I mean, that's kind of my thinking on some of this.
Thank you. Seem to remember that, Gary.
That was pretty, very similar. And there was a lengthy discussion at planning and zoning and at the board and multiple meetings, trying to kind of work through some of these questions.
I think you're right. It still needs to go through P&amp;Z, whether they need to do the legal or whatever. Remember that being, I think that street at the time had parking on both sides of the street, which made it even more crowded, wasn't it, Jack?
Yes. It was just a court.
So again, that's why we came back to that.
And, and Jack?
Individual neighborhood.
And Jack reminded us that we actually looked at a code amendment, right? Was that what it was?
Well, we've had to change a section of code on home occupations and we'd also have to change Appendix A.
Is that what we did on that last one? Was that in the?
That's what they denied, yes.
Okay. So it, right now, we don't allow it at all?
In R1, R2, or R3.
It's not a conditional use, not allowed at all in R1, R2, R3. And so one of the options maybe, Alderman Ock, is to consider making it a conditional use.
Well, the other issue I think we have to wrestle with that came up last time is, we really don't have authority to go into anybody's home and inspect. I mean, when somebody sells a home and somebody buys a home in Warrenton, we don't do a walk through those homes to make sure they're up to standard. We don't have authority to do that. So, to allow a business to function in a home, we don't have authority to come in to, to do some checking. Now, may, yeah, maybe the state's doing something, but we have the ultimate obligation because it's our homes and our property in our town. We have, to me, we'd also have to change the code to figure out some way of us doing some ability to get in the home and do some assessments. And then you have to set up a whole bunch of rules as to what's right because you can't make one decision for this person and a different decision with this person has to be within a structure of rules and guidelines. So we'd have to consider that also.
And I think that was a point that was brought up last time as well, was what if planning commission wanted to expand some requirements beyond what the state allowed for some additional space or some additional living area? Because there was a question about the whole house being approved for it or just a room. So that was part of the discussion as well, Alderman Ock.
If I may, the whole house is inspected. So regardless of whether the child, children are in that area, or like is it, they do use the term designated childcare area, your whole home is inspected. And to a point, the city is involved because we have health, safety, and sanitation come out once a year to re-up your license. And also the fire district department comes out to make sure that it's up to fire safety standards. My input is, so I would be working, if this got approved and I could get licensed theoretically, I would be working with a childcare facility specialist. I was wondering maybe if there's any way the city could appoint somebody to essentially ease that job? So if you wanted extra check-ins, extra checkups, that would be something that might be able to go through the social services specifically within the city of Warrenton.
Well, we don't really have a social service branch in the city of Warrenton to do that. I mean, to be quite honest with you, we'd have to train somebody who has, again, some policies, some sort of rules, something to be a guide for them to go through in those assessments at a greater rate. And I'm sure that you would do everything you could to have an outstanding center. But sometimes we write the rules for people who push the gray areas too. And so, that's part of what we have to look at, is I mean, you may be the most conscious person, a conscientious person in the world and you may follow the letters to the T, but sometimes you have to look at the people who are going to push the gray edge and you have to set your rules on gray edge, not.
I understand completely. And if I may, that's kind of what the city is doing now in my opinion with not allowing city in-home daycares. Within Lakeview neighborhood alone, just with me walking around, talking to my neighbors, there is five other in-home daycares. And three of those, I know for a fact, are over numbers. There's no accountability. Yes, we have the ability to watch up to four kids, but anybody could come in off the street, I could take in any amount of kids. And nobody from the city is making sure these kids are taken care of properly. Nobody from the city is coming in, shutting you down, or checking up on it. There's no registry. And I'm sorry, if I may, you want the city to expand and grow with all of these businesses, which means more families coming in, there needs to be that accountability there, especially within the city limits.
Well, that?
We have two, now three, state licensed facilities, but they can only carry so many. Plus, two of them have religious-based curriculum. The, the third one that just opened, I'm not sure that the curriculum is exactly established yet. Parents need more options and they need safe options. Not just options to where, well, you can babysit four kids, so just try to live off the four kids and then try to take care of them the best you can. I am sorry, guys, that just doesn't cut it. I need my kids to be in a place that is regulated, checked up on, made sure that they're held accountable for their actions, for these children. It's not pretty. I don't know how much experience you have personally with the childcare industry in this town.
I might interrupt. I find the irony in this and I hope that's not wasted because later in, in our meeting, we're actually going to be addressed by Mama Bear's Daycare in regard to a revised site plan. And, and they've had to jump through all the hoops.
Mm-hmm.
So, the fact that you report that you have neighbors that are violating the current regulation, I, I don't think excuses it and, and.
No, I completely agree. And I have every intention of.
We don't want to be big brother. I mean, it's interesting, you talk about child safety, but as Alderman Ock mentioned, you're going to have a great deal better opportunity for state inspection and public inspection by, by the city if it's in a approved, coded facility. So, I, I mean.
So essentially.
What I'm hearing you say is that you can't really make it profitable limiting it to four children. And what that says to me is you need to go find a commercial location, like these folks did, and open a commercial daycare.
And I understand that quite well. But again, going back to the personalized, like talking about the children and the type of care they receive, some people want a larger facility with the numbers and the structure and that's great, but some parents do want a more affordable option with the in-home. They have, we can offer more flexible hours, more personalized care. I have had kids from nine months up to three years old and I've seen them grow this entire time. It's different. It's a different aspect. And I understand I could very well go out and jump through all of the hoops that the city is going to throw me to open a center.
And not just the city, the state.
Well, and I, well, and that's something that if I want to do it on my home though, I should have the ability to be able to combat those hoops from the state, which is what I'm trying to get changed. Because I don't mind the accountability, I don't mind jumping through hoops. And, and if people are honest to goodness, doing this for the right reason and caring for children for the right reasons, they should want to go through the hoops too. And we should have the option to have that accountability.
But we, but we don't have the expertise, the resources, or anything to do some of those functions that you're saying the city should be doing. We just don't have a social service branch of our city operations. We don't have the expertise to do that and so.
But you have the, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's all right.
But you do have the accountability outside of R1 through R3? I'm not understanding that. If, if they're outside of R1 through R3 districts, they can apply for that conditional use permit and then it's okay. I am not understanding why it's not okay within R1 through R3.
Because you're in a residential area that doesn't allow the same public inspection. You, you're in a home. And when you bought your home, it was zoned what it is today. And I would hope that that's what you understood, that you could, was available for you to do there. I think the fact that it does allow up to four unrelated children is, is substantial as it is, but as Gary mentioned, we don't, we don't have a city inspection of the interior of a home for plumbing and electrical and all those things that go with when they submit a, a site plan is, again, we've had a, another group have presented it and that, they've gone through all of the regulations that the city requires for daycare. So it's just, you know, one way is the probably more expensive way to do it, but I think the, the bottom line to me is if this is something that you want to pursue, I think it has to go through planning and zoning, that's where it has to be initiated. It's, it's simply not allowable under our current code. I'm not suggesting to you that, that it would be approved by the planning and zoning and recommended to us, but that's where you start.
So just to summarize, I guess, because that sounded like, at least your mind was made up. I guess my question is to the entire board, if I submit this text amendment and attend the planning and zoning meeting, regardless of their recommendation, if it does get bumped back to you, would you have any further questions or is this kind of where you stand on it? Open to licensed facility or don't operate at all? Because that's what I'm understanding.
I'm perfectly honest with you. I'm not open to it all. I think when, when people make investments in residential neighborhoods, they expect the property next to them to be residential also. And we always have, we just went through a case of, in another part of town, something that felt like they could run a retail or use, use furniture or whatever shop in town. And that's not what you expect when you invest in a home in a residential area. And I have a very low, I was going to say tolerance, that's not the right word. I just don't think we should be doing that kind of stuff. I just, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Chris, and you're, do any other cities our size or like in St. Louis, do you know of any others? What is, what is their take on in-home?
It varies pretty substantially from municipality to municipality. When we looked at this last time, I actually spoke with the inspector from the state that was working with the lady that was trying to open it, because she had already done her application, was in, she was actually getting ready to open it. And then we found out and then informed her of the code. And she said, there are not a lot of municipalities, and she's got like a region that includes the city of Columbia and whatnot. I think the city of Columbia allowed it in certain portions of the city, but not in the entire city, in the residential ones. And then there's quite a few cities that don't allow it over four at all. And in fact, most of her time was inspecting daycares that had more than four kids and then they reported to the state prosecutor and it's prosecuted through the state. So it's not very frequent, but it does vary from city to city.
And the other thing I would ask is if we, how do we go about if we have home daycare actually in violation of this? How do, how do we go about fixing that?
If it's complaint, you, you should actually make it to the state and the state.
Yeah, you, like the families I met with that were over numbers. Joy Nicholas, I think is her name, is a childcare specialist that deals with, I guess, you could say cases in Warren County. She would be the one that I would call to say, well, of course I could call, they have a hotline number as well, but she would be the most direct link to call and report those facilities to.
And they take it to the state prosecutor for, because it violates the state statute. It may violate our zoning and typically what, like, in my experience in municipalities is they'll call us and say, hey, will you coordinate a prosecution for your zoning violation as well? Because they really, really try to regulate it and try to enforce it.
Okay. Well, I think, any other questions for Ms. Vaquero?
All right, well, thank you.
Okay, Anna, thank you. And I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
No, it's okay. It happens all the time.
Thank you. Now you have this form of a.
That's if there was anything. It's open-ended.
Okay. Okay, next topic of, on the agenda is allowing golf carts on city streets. And I think everybody here is, is there somebody here presenting that or what's, is this just a discussion item?
Well, there, I mean, there has been a request, if you only could come up, to have the city change their ordinance to allow those type of vehicles in the streets. So maybe you're in the best position to kind of talk to the board.
Well, I'm Kenny Riz, because if you don't know me, I've lived here my entire life. My parents lived here my entire life. My mother sat on the board, so. I'd actually bought a golf cart some time ago, done research prior to that to make sure what state laws applied to that. And if there are any city ordinance that would prevent you from driving it here. And I had not found any, so therefore I bought a vehicle that, that fit the state law that was in place. When I was driving it, I was stopped by a very nice city officer and said that there was an ordinance in place that I couldn't drive it. So I went through trying to contact different people, trying to find out what that ordinance was. I think it ended up with the city attorney and the chief of police. I haven't heard back if there actually is an ordinance in place.
There is not an ordinance that specifically under that statute says you cannot have a drive on city streets, a golf cart, I forget, low-speed vehicles, what it's defined as, but it is required to follow, which is somewhat incongruent. All the, any vehicle of any, any motorized vehicle of any type, which includes a golf cart, is required to have all the state licenses and inspections and safety features that are required under state law. So part of the reason for the discussion con, you know, because I mean, obviously your golf cart can't have everything that a car has, is there some inconsistencies there with the low-speed vehicles and our regulations for what's required to be on a city street? So it's not outright banned, but there are equipment requirements that I'm sure. So it's not outright banned, but there are equipment requirements that I'm sure a golf cart probably doesn't have, you know, beyond just the headlights and brake lights.
So there is no city statute.
No city ordinance that bans it.
That stopped him from driving.
Well, to clarify, there's two, there's two state laws. One bans them. One specifically says a golf cart. And a golf cart is defined by the state as a vehicle that is normally driven on golf course and will not exceed nineteen miles per hour. A low-speed vehicle is manufactured specifically to drive on the street. And the reason they started building these was so that people would drive them around town. They're normally electric vehicles, so, you know, good, you know, they don't spend any money on gas, just running around town. That was the whole idea of those. Lots of states have the same law that Missouri does regarding that. Sulard, you know, in St. Louis, you see a lot of places where they have golf carts all over the place. You also see that a lot of people are driving golf carts. They're not driving low-speed vehicles. For instance, my, my vehicle has headlights, taillights, horns, mirrors, headlights, I'm sorry, windshield, what else? Seatbelts. And I also carry insurance on it, just like, that's one of the state requirements, to have insurance on the vehicle, just like you're driving his car. So, you know, I went through the research to try to make sure that when I bought this vehicle, I had something that I could drive here. So when I was stopped, you know, my mother helped inform the police department. So as soon as I got stopped, I was very respectful and went right back home and didn't drive it again until this meeting took place to find out.
So is your request that we allow low-speed vehicles or golf carts? Because there is a distinction.
There is a distinction.
So, I mean, what is your request? Is it golf carts or is it low-speed vehicles?
My original, my original question was, what is the ordinance that is preventing me from driving my low-speed vehicle here? That was my original question.
And there is not an ordinance in the books right now. But our ordinance would require him to have a safety inspection for it, which there's no safety inspection standard, would require him to have it registered. He can't register his low-speed vehicle. So if he got stopped, he would get a ticket for certain requirements that is applicable to any motorized vehicle on city streets. And so that's kind of where we came to on this.
So to play the devil's advocate a little bit, because I've witnessed, yeah, me, imagine that. I've witnessed wheelchairs, motorized wheelchairs, not just driving on the street, driving down the middle of the street or driving in the wrong direction down the middle of the street. And when I suggested that might be dangerous, I was told they can drive it wherever they want. They're, they don't have to abide by any traffic ordinances. I almost struck an individual about ten o'clock one night in front of the Emo's Pizza who was driving, I guess you're driving a wheelchair, was driving wheelchair northbound and southbound lane. And again, it was suggested, no headlights, certainly no turn signals. Almost, almost as if it was a death wish, because I had to really swear to the left and avoid it. And so I think sometimes we close our minds to alternative forms of transportation. I was here when we first started seeing scooters, forty-nine cc scooters. No license, no helmet to be driven on the street. And I see them all over. I see them on the service roads going from here to Wright City. I wouldn't want to ride one, but those are within state regulations and are allowed. And all I'm saying is at a time when we have an aging population, we have a lot of different types of vehicles. Lawnmowers. Certain guy, I understand it rides a motor tractor around the town. I just think that sometimes we close our mind to alternative forms of transportation. And I think you guys have done a good job of pointing out some of the concerns and thoughts on it, and maybe some safety requirements, but I think we ought to consider.
Because really, all we'd have to do on a low-speed vehicle is to take off the ordinance to require them to register and get a safety inspection. Because right now, you really do have an ordinance that bans it. Because if he gets pulled over, or anybody gets pulled over in a low-speed vehicle, they're going to get a ticket for not having it registered, which he can't do. And he's going to get a ticket for not having a safety inspection, which he can't do. So the ordinance that affects prohibits the person.
Practically speaking.
Practically speaking.
You'd take a risk if you drive it under the city ordinances.
I mean, I think it would make more sense to make sure that they're not being driven on high-speed streets. Only allow them to be driven on a low mile per hour limit street than, say, on Highway Forty-Seven. I mean, I, I happen to have a fetish, and I ride what is called a UTV. And we go, we're going to Northern Indiana in November, and they're ATV parks. But you folks would be shocked at the counties in this very state that allow ATVs and UTVs to be driven on state roads.
And they can, and they fly, so they'll fly.
Well, most of them, and they limit night driving. I mean, there's some limitations placed on them, no, no riding on interstates. And I, you know, they're more rural counties and less traffic and all that. But I think sometimes we say no just to say no. And again, I applaud the chief and Gary and his staff for doing the research to put it in front of us. And then I think we also have to recognize that either we have a law that prohibits it or we don't. And so if it's gray, then I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that people like Mr. Ruse and his wife can abide by the law and yet not lose their investment.
If I may, I, I have serious safety concerns with a vehicle that in and of itself may be safe in an environment such as a cart path or some other low-speed area where the largest vehicle it's going to face is another car. Even allowing, in my opinion, one of these vehicles to operate in an area where three-quarter ton, half-ton trucks are being backed out of parking spaces, driven, I can't see that it would fare too well in a collision, even a low-speed collision.
Ever seen a smart car?
It still has to meet federal guidelines, though, doesn't it, with crumple zones and five-mile-an-hour bumpers, airbags?
You ever seen a smart car?
Yes, I've seen a smart car.
Ever seen one on the interstate?
Yes.
I can't say that I have, actually.
I sure wouldn't.
The tires on the eighteen-wheelers are bigger than the smart car.
Yeah.
It's a smart car, but not the smartest ever of yours, can I say?
They've got an attorney in town here that drives one every day.
Would these vehicles be allowed to go down main street?
Well, that's what the suggestion of the summary that they gave us talked about, that you could limit, you know, limit where they do. To me, that's, it would be a huge, huge hazard. It's already a hazard with people backing out of parking places, but.
The reality is, if you, I don't know what quadrant of the city you're in, but in order to get from, if you live over the north, the southeast side of town and you want to get down here, you have to cross a highway. I mean, there's just no way around it. So if you say you can't be on a highway, I guess you have to sit there and wait till there's no police around there across the road. But, you know what I mean? There's a practical consideration there if you say you can't drive on.
The state statute says that you can operate the vehicle in anything thirty-five miles an hour or less. And you can cross anything thirty-five miles an hour or less.
And I get all, I mean, I understand your concerns about public safety, but we all are, we are responsible for ourselves to a large degree. I'm old enough. Mike Schiller has been here long enough. Gary's been here long enough to remember when we had individuals that were riding, taking their riding lawnmowers, in one case, with their wife in a trailer behind them and coming right down Main Street. And I don't remember any tickets being issued. All I'm saying is, it sounds pretty inconsistent to me. I thought we actually had an ordinance that banned it. I'd only care to the, to the citizens or community either. I think we need to get this clarified or change it, one or the other.
Well, you know, I ride a bicycle. And I used to ride out Highway M all the way to Wright City or Strack Church Road and all that. And I'd ride out to the outlet center. And, I mean, I knew the risk of it. I wear a helmet. But like you say, if I have, if, if somebody hits me in one of the bigger vehicles, yeah, it's not going to be. But one thing, I think most of the residences, residents that I meet, they are pretty, they pull a wide, cut a wide swath around me. So I think, you know, they're more aware, people, I think, are more aware of the different vehicles that they have to share the road with. Motorcycles, bicycles, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I ride a motorcycle, and so cheap, I'd say to you, I really don't. There's nothing to protect me, anything but the helmet on my head. So.
That's not near enough.
And it's not near enough if you tangle with the wrong-sized vehicle. So I don't know that that in and of itself is a, is a great argument. I just think we need some consistency on it, whatever the majority of the board decides on. And that's, that's where we need to go. And then we need to make our ordinance clear that people like Mr. Ruse doesn't expend a bunch of money on the premise that he checked it out and didn't see anything that prevented him from doing it.
I think the real question to be answered is, is the board on the whole inclined to create an ordinance to allow this? And if the answer to that question is yes, then I think we can have staff put together based on what the state statute requires and what the federal requirements are to put together a draft to bring back that you all can then approve or deny.
Why would we create our own ordinance? Why wouldn't we just pull off the part of the ordinance that talks about registration and safety inspections and automatically then falls under the state statute?
Well, I think we can do that. I think what we have to do is, we have to go in and craft a definition for low-speed vehicles that I would assume we want to exclude the traditional golf cart that goes very, very slowly, that doesn't have all the safety regulations. We want to require like the statute has, all the safety regulations. I think we can do that and bring a draft back to you.
But isn't that redundant to the state? Didn't the state already do that?
Well, the state statute says, you know, it basically allows you to adopt your own regulation scheme. We want to have an inordinate, so if we have somebody violating it, you know, we don't want to rely on, because, to be perfectly candid with you, I don't know if the state prosecutor will entertain a violation of the state statute for low-speed vehicles. It's probably going to be something we enforce in our own municipal court. And I think it's just something to get some direction from you guys, that we can put together some ideas based on the discussion and say, this is kind of what we came up with.
Yeah, and in my case, I'd like it clarified as far as other vehicles that are currently being driven on city streets without being stopped or prosecuted, because there are many.
There's a lot of motorized wheelchairs going throughout the community.
Yeah, I think that's a great point.
And they're always on the street. Very seldom you see on the sidewalk. I, you know, the other, I don't know where you guys, the rest of you guys are at. I mean, I have no problem following the state statute myself, but I don't know where you guys are at.
Yeah, from my perspective, you know, a lot of cities, when, if they do allow golf carts, you know, there's a process put in place where, you know, you're buying a sticker from the city. You know, you verify to the city clerk or whoever that you have insurance. And the city lists out, you know, the requirements for that vehicle. So, you know, you have to have seatbelts, you have to have lights. Or if you don't have lights, it can't be operated a half hour before it does, you know, that, the whole normal thing that you see. So, but that's, that's normally when there are putting ordinance in place that is specifically allowing them. So food for thought.
So other cities have it where you can't operate in the dark at night?
Yeah, some of, it depends, like, some of the state statutes that I've read, you know, they, you have to have lights on the vehicle, which makes sense, but.
But you can't operate at night?
Well, there's so, there's a lot of variations of that. We were in West Virginia, we could ride until eleven o'clock at night.
Right.
In rural areas, I'm not suggesting that's what we do, but, but, you know. The other thing that's got, I think you have to recognize, at some point here in the near future, it will be dark at three or four o'clock in the, you know, in the afternoon, so.
Right. And I've got ground effects on mine, so I really want to get a car.
Okay, I want the board.
I'm on board.
With the board's approval, then I would direct the city staff to look into and come up with something.
And could, could when we're doing that, maybe clarify, and Chris, there's, you know, there's probably some ADA exemptions on the wheelchairs. But it just, you know, it's scared the bejesus out of me, but I got almost struck.
We'll get on that and clarify that with the police department.
Because, you know, the chief needs, and his staff, his officers need direction also. Because, you know, how, how and what are they going to enforce? At least if these are allowed, they have to obey, I would assume, the same laws and regulations of the road that part is, right? So maybe that's the time to look at the other reasons.
Absolutely.
Kenny, thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, we'll hear from Terry Thorne, Director of Operations and Finance Officer.
I don't have anything for you specifically this evening about that.
Okay, thank you. Next, then we'll hear from Guy Jivers, our Public Works Director, and I bet he won't pass, will he?
No, I've got a few things. I'm monthly, monthly report some sidewalk work on Arlington Way. Got the crack laid at the new city park. Got some brush that cleared out for the air to come into the new city park. And some street repairs on Arlington Way in the Fall Festival. Had a two-inch water main leak on Lakeview Drive. And restore backups for the month, all in private. Any questions, comments?
Any questions, Guy?
Nope. Next item I have, I had a, was asked to look into the stop sign at Bedford Memorial and Steinhagen. And we did a site adjustment out there, and the stop sign is too far back. That needs to be adjusted, moved forward twenty-five feet. And we still have an issue with site alignment that is going to take no parking going towards the laundromat. So we need to get the no parking signs in there and adjust the stop sign. Stop, stop sign has to be adjusted. It's way too far back right now.
So do you, do we need an ordinance to put the no parking in? I assume we don't need an ordinance to move the sign, or a motion to move the sign. We'll just move it, but do we need a motion to have the ordinance dropped it up to have no parking in that site?
If you are going to make a no parking area, it has to be done by ordinance.
It's just an amendment to our appendix.
Right. I, I mean, to me, I go through there all the time. I think there, there are issues of large trucks park there, and they're particularly close to the fire hydrant. I don't, they may be a legal distance from the fire hydrant, but it is virtually impossible for somebody driving a normal-sized vehicle to see around and with any sense of safety. You're, basically what you're doing is you're creeping halfway out to the street before you make a decision to go. And that's just not the way it should be. I'm surprised there hasn't been accidents there.
So is it your recommendation to move the stop sign?
Move the stop sign and get an ordinance for no parking sign.
So move.
Can I ask a question? I mentioned to Terry, and you live in Wentzville, if I remember right. What about the, like. right. What about the, like what they do in Wentzville? They'll have the stop sign back here, and they'll have another sign on it that says, "Stop at the white line," and that's at some very busy intersections in Wentzville. Have you seen that?
I have not. I mean, that's an option, but now I'm...
There's a couple of them on Point Prairie Road, and then the roads behind Lowe's and all that, the one that runs north and south. So, I would think that'd be a less expensive option, but I don't know.
I don't, for starting, I'd have to purchase the sign and get that put up, and then I'd have, and not that I don't want to do the maintaining, but I'd have to maintain the white stripe, and every time it would start to get faded, would have to go in and repaint it. And usually we paint everything the city has, usually twice a year. Like Market Street, we'll paint that maybe once a year, depending on how it holds up. But if we're going to do a cross, which will get traveled all the time, then we're going to be painting it all the time.
My concern if you move the sign up is you're basically on both sides of that parking lot for, I don't know what fraternal organization is sitting there. You know, I could see that sign get knocked down.
Sonic wound.
Well, we have, we have billers that we can put up, and I can also address it and extend it, because the parking comes off of Veterans Memorial, doesn't come off of Steinhagen for that business.
Okay. I think you had an issue similar to this at the end of Market Street, did you not?
Market, we did, we did the same thing at Market, dropped the sign, painted around it, dropped some billers, rolled on, knock on wood, that hasn't been drilled yet.
Okay. Go for it, then, if that's what your recommendation is, I don't have a problem.
So I renew a motion to approve the recommendation.
And I second it.
Public Works.
Okay. Do we need that, do we need that motion, and to go ahead with your...
If we're going to make a no parking.
Okay, then I have a motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Costello, to amend the ordinance for a no parking area along Veterans Memorial at the, at Steinhagen. Is that good enough?
Perfect.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries six zero. Thank you, Guy.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from our Chief of Police, Larry Ellard.
Evening, Board. I have two items for you. The first would be the monthly report.
Well, I guess one thing that I liked the monthly report, you know, you see how many times people buy needles and the officers dispose of it, which I think is a great thing, because I, there's a lot of communities where they don't. They just tell the property owner to dispose of it, but they have an officer come out and do that. I think that really delivers a strong message. Because I know we had one in front of our houses, and we called, and the officer came out, and you had a chance to interact with the officer, and it was just a nice service. I mean, I don't know if it pulled him away from anything important, but, you know, he was doing otherwise. But I just, I think it's good that we're doing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that one? Okay, what else?
I also have the next three policies for your approval that have made through committee.
And these, I take it are to be in compliance with our getting certified and everything, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Will this, will this policy affect the ride-along, what we're doing currently with ride-along, or is it just formalizing it?
There was just a couple of tweaks made to it. That policy already existed, but like all policies, they're supposed to be renewed or reviewed. So this one fell in. We made changes to the form, indexed the form, et cetera, et cetera.
Anything else? This time then I'll entertain a motion to approve the City Hall screening, security screening, inspections, and ride-along programs, policies as submitted by chief.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Alderman Miller, seconded by Alderman Ock. Roll call vote.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Jack Hand for zoning officer and building commissioner. Jack?
Good evening, Board. First item I have is the Building Department Code Enforcement Monthly Report. And on the property maintenance violations page, the first page, you'll notice there's several numbers in red. When we're putting this one together, we discovered that we had a glitch in how we were getting our numbers on here. We were cutting ourselves short. Previously, we discovered that on the closed notices on the bottom, we were only including the ones that was issued and closed in that month, even if, if a notice was wrote the month before and then closed in that month, it wasn't included. So all of the numbers in red, we corrected all the way back to January, and it's an increase. It's basically almost doubled the amount of violations we've closed so far this year. So, just explaining why some of them was red. If you have no other questions, my next item is a special event permit, SCP-31 approval request. On September 18th, 2017, Terry Bolt submitted a special event permit, SCP-31 approval request for the Project Graduation 2018 fundraiser cornhole tournament to be held at DeWaren County Fairgrounds on October 21st, 2017. This motion for approval passed seven to zero with three absent at the October 12th, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission Special Meeting with no additional conditions. I'm Ms. Bolts here, if you have any specific questions for.
Any questions on that? And I'll entertain a motion to approve the special event permit for Project Graduation fundraiser, a cornhole tournament on October 21st.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Delloy. Roll call vote.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Next, Jack?
Next item I have is a revised site plan, SP-113, revised parking approval request. On October 12th, 2017, a request is filed for the approval of a second revised parking layout for the Mama Bears Daycare located at 705 Powell Street. For the approved amended site plan, SP-113, this approval request is not asking for any additional parking stalls. They're asking to move the four parking stalls south of the building along Powell Street to the area south of the southwest part of the building. To meet code, the existing curb stops would have to be moved to a minimum distance of 36 feet from the south property line, and it's basically, they've got some run in parallel to their building that they need to move about a foot and a half to the north. So it shouldn't be no problem for them to slide the curb stops over.
I have a question, procedural question. You know, we've approved this, and this is your second, third time down here on these changes. I mean, without advocating our responsibility, it would seem to me if, if we basically in principle have agreed that this is the format of the site plan, if there's things that are being changed that aren't material of nature, seems like it's burdensome to the property owner to have to continually come before the board. Is there any way that these type adjustments could be made by staff? And if the staff doesn't, has a problem with it, they bring it to the board? Because I think it's kind of an inconvenience for the business owner to be down here three times on, you know, moving something a foot and a half. And, I mean, you're going to look at it and say, yeah, it makes sense, it works. So, is there a procedural thing we could do differently, or is the board not, are we just comfortable doing what it is? I mean, it doesn't happen a lot, but it does happen.
That's what I was wondering, if, if this is something to carry, carry a little bit further. Does, does this really need to come before us again, or could Jack have made the call on this and say it's, it's...
It does need to come before you guys. What we could do is, like, the issue really has been the parking, figuring out the parking, the driveline. There was some extension where they were going to put the playground area. What we could do is, like, for example, Alderman Ock is, we created the administrative site plan process where it became burdensome for small changes of use of businesses that gets approved administratively by Jack. I mean, one of the suggestions I would make is possibly we could do some type of adjustment to our site plan process to give Jack some discretion to vary some of the minor parking requirements that probably would have alleviated this particular situation, which may be fairly simple to do, and you see it in quite a few cities, that basically they're like, okay, here's our parking requirement. Then when they're up and running, administratively, you can vary to some degree the parking requirements, and if, basically if staff is not comfortable, they can send it on to the board.
To me, that would be more business-friendly.
Are you comfortable with that, Jack?
Currently, I believe only the board can approve, and that's what I brought up.
Would you be comfortable with that procedural change?
Just for minor, like...
Oh, something like this, absolutely.
See, that's a thing.
Could I say something real quick?
I think it's a question of delegating.
Yeah, you can delegate that and make it...
Delegating these people, and we've, we've come to trust their judgments on a lot of things, and I think, I think that's maybe just what we need to...
She probably wants to be on camera a lot so they can promote their business, right?
No. We've kind of had a change of heart since this has kind of started. We've added four employees. If we get up to our full capacity, we really want to be able to utilize the other side of that building, just like we're doing on the side where the water tower is. So we want to be able to park the same way. We did talk, we had a survey done. We have 42 feet from the front edge of the building over to our property line. The back edge of the building, where the four parking spots are now, we have 41.7 feet. We talked to our neighbor, Tom Buckley, who has Warren County Glass. He has agreed to let us use five inches to get our 42 feet. He's given me a letter, giving us that five inches, and really that's what we want to do. We want to park the same way on both sides of the building, because if we get up to full capacity, we're going to have more than two or three parents dropping off at the same time. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I have his letter with copies.
You know, and I hope what you understand is, you know, Jack is trying to go by the regulations that we place in front of you, and I'm glad to hear tonight that we're putting a little more responsibility and authority with the person that's dealing with the customer, the ER customer. So, I think it's a good change.
That would be great, if we could get a call back, if we could get some cooperation from the city. We're not getting that. I sent you guys all an email the other day, every single one of you. Part of them came back to us as undeliverable. We sent them to the email addresses that were on the city site. We called three times in a two-week period, never got a call back from anybody, but managed to get in the mail. I noticed a violation because my daughter parked in the wrong spot. Now, they can drive by and see a violation, but we can't get, we can't get a phone call back. I, I have real issues. This process has been a nightmare. Every small business we have talked to has had a nightmare story. Enough is enough. We're trying to make the city money. We're trying to earn a living, and we are stopped at every point by the city.
Well, I think we had an agreement the last time you left here of what the parking was going to be.
We did, and we upheld that agreement, except my daughter, one day, didn't pay attention and parked in the wrong spot.
Well, I don't, I don't think I got an email.
I didn't get an email.
Yours came back. Gary's came back. Nobody else came back to us as undeliverable, so I don't know. But it was amazing, because I sent the email after I had called and left my third message. I sent the email, the very next morning, got a call.
Who did your call?
The planning, or the building officials always. Left three voicemails, no calls back in a two-week period. I realize we're a little bitty business, but we're trying here.
Sure. And, and if I can just make one quick comment. One of the things that's happened, and I think one of the things that I think is a realization with the smaller businesses when they come in, is they've been trying to figure out how they want this to park as this has moved along, because the original plan, and correct me if I'm incorrect, the original plan, you guys wanted to expand the play area in the back, correct me?
Correct.
So that changed the parking, and unfortunately, there's inflexibility in our code with regards to the parking requirement. That's approved by ordinance, by our ordinance, and, and we'll work on a change to that. And then, the situation that happened that you brought up with your daughter, there was actually parking, I think the reason the violation came out was because you guys put those parking stops in, in the, it wasn't just there was a car parked there, there was parking stops that were put in there.
Right. When they, when they rented the barcat, they put them in the wrong spot.
Yeah, they put them in the wrong spot, and so that, and there was three cars parked over there, because I think people probably thought they could park there because there was a parking, things were there, were there. And then the request that here is tonight is different than the request you're now bringing up to the podium, right? And I, and I understand the frustration is trying to figure out parking with a building that already exists and trying to work it all out. So, I think we can work on a code change for it, but I think we're going to probably have to take the new concept that's here today and work with them on to kind of figure out the parking, because that's all new information. Because I don't know that you guys, you know, we got to look at the letter. We don't have that stuff in front of us to make sure that we can make it work. But, you know, we are, you know, from a staff level, really trying to, you know, we spent some time going out there on the site and whatnot. I get it, it's frustrating, but it's not, it's just trying to uphold the codes. It's not trying to get in the way or, you know, prohibit what you guys are doing.
Okay.
Can I say we're the financier of this situation? We've been dealing with this since last May. Last May, the young people were told that we had to have a lane going around the building, because we didn't have enough room on either side, according to Jack. So we dealt with that, we dealt with it. Finally, Terry came out and said, they can park here, but they can't park on the other side, because as of last month, we were two foot short, according to Jack, the one that you have all this confidence in.
Jack's employing the ordinance, so according, don't say according to Jack, say according to the ordinance. Because Jack's employing the ordinance.
No, you're misunderstanding me. The ordinance says we had to have 42 foot. Jack came out there and said, you're two foot short, you can't use this. So I had the survey done. We weren't two foot short. We're five inches short on one edge of the building. Do you realize how much money this has cost in the delays because he couldn't do his job? And it's amazing. But once I had the survey done, he managed, since May, to go over to the survey of people and talk to them, to find out we were five inches short. This is complete incompetence. It's cost us money. The families that were going to come with us to open, that was delayed because of this, they've all been inconvenienced. They all had to find other options, all because of the incompetence.
Well, it's not incompetence, sir, and...
How is it not incompetence when...
Let me explain. You just had your opportunity to talk.
Three weeks ago, you were two foot short.
Excuse me, first off, sir, you didn't mention your name when you...
My name is Rick Fogg.
Okay, Rick, would you, hold on just a second. Alderman Costello is trying to address you, so let's let him...
Okay, let me make one statement. Just remember, three weeks ago, he told you we were two foot short.
And you didn't submit a survey with the application.
That was my job.
Well, let me ask you a...
I thought the building commissioner knew all this.
Can I ask you a simple question? Your plans that you submitted for this project, were they hand-drawn or were they professionally drawn?
Which time? We've been here that many.
They were all hand-drawn.
That's my question. Now, I've, I've done what you folks have done in this city and in the city of Wentzville, and probably what should be done is that we should require a set of professionally drawn plans when it's submitted. Then we would know the distances.
Okay, well then, my question to you is, if we didn't have the professional drawings, what was he basing his opinion on that delayed our...
I can answer your question. I was the...
I can answer your question. I was there. I was there, sir. When we came to the location, someone from your facility provided a drawing-
That's not answering my question.
No, let me finish. Provided a drawing that had dimensions on it, that was provided by the owner of the property, if I'm not mistaken. Those are the measurements that were used at that point. I believe that your wife actually held-
Did she, did she-
Let me finish, sir.
Rick, will you let she's, let her finish, okay?
I believe your wife held one end of the tape measure while Jack held the other, and they measured off the distance according to the drawing that was handed to us when we were at your property.
Hey, you're missing point here. She went in and got the survey, the original survey for the property, and gave it to you. Yes or no?
Yes.
That's right. And based on that, you still stood here three weeks ago and told us we were two foot short.
Based on those dimensions, and from that drawing, and the tape that your wife held one end of, you were two foot short. Alderman Miller was there with us.
How is that possible? If you've got the survey in front of you, and you're the building commissioner, you're going to sit there and tell us we're two foot short, when now, in actuality, you were proven dead wrong?
Well, it's still short. It's just a shorter distance. The point is, sir, we probably, as a city, need to require professionally drawn drawings when it comes into us. And then we wouldn't be sitting here, it, it would be an engineer or whoever put, submitted the plans that's responsible for telling us where your building is versus where your property lines are.
As you can tell, we're upset. What do we do now? What is our next step to get what we need?
I think prior to this outburst, the-
Well, but the problem is, Maran Board, our board members, is you're requesting something different than what's on the agenda for tonight, correct? You want to go back to the original plan for the parking?
Correct.
Okay. So what's on for tonight is not something we're prepared to address.
Okay.
We just have to look at what they have, and, and I mean, if you guys want to approve us working with them for the parking and delegate some authority to us, and if there's an issue with it, we can come back, but I've not seen that letter or reviewed that letter, and I was part of this process, because I want to make this point clear for the public as well. This parking design has varied based on their submittals at least three times, and now we're going back to a fourth one, and that's a new business coming in, and we're just trying to work with them to understand and work with them on the parking. So, so this is a new one. If you guys want to vote to give us some authority to work with them and adjust the parking, we can do that, and that's what I'd ask you to do, and then we'll try to work with them to try to come up with a solution and look at this five inches or whatnot that they want to do, and see if there's some varying we can do on.
Ian, in order to expedite the process for the property owner, I would, I would say we would want to give you authority to do what you need to do to get this thing resolved, so you don't have to be doing this two weeks from now, four weeks from now. This is, I mean, this has to be resolved. So I don't know if we need a motion.
I would ask you guys to put a motion forward to-
I would make that motion.
No, I would second it.
Okay. Let me figure out how, okay, I have a motion by Alderman Miller, seconded by Alderman Ock-
Yes.
-to delegate the zoning, zoning officer, building commissioner, in conjunction with the, with our city attorney, to come up with a viable plan to move this off-center.
One of my questions is, before the motion is voted on, is, I want to make sure, you know, the five inches from another property, you guys, our zoning process, is typically required to be done by either a lease, which is, this is a letter, and I want to make this more, you know, or by a boundary adjustment, which obviously, we don't want to get into this, this is just parking. I would ask that this authority be given if, if the building commissioner and planning officer determines there's not a safety issue, the ability to vary it under the forty-two inches to address the forty-one inches, forty feet, seven inches.
I would prefer to shorten the length and do the five inches over the line. That would seem to be a better solution. But you guys do what you want to do.
But if, if we can vary it less than the forty-two parking requirement, if necessary, if we deem it to be safe?
Right. That's fine. So I would, I would amend my second to adopt that language in the ordinance.
All right. We'll, we'll make it, we'll figure it out. Okay.
Okay. I have a motion. Alderman Miller is seconded by Alderman Ock. Let's have a roll call vote.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Can we, before we move on, can we talk a second about Greg, Greg's point, and I think it's a well-taken point. You know, you, you try to allow shortcuts to save money on the part of the developer, on the part of the business coming in, but it seems like over the last six months, and we can go back to, I don't want to name the businesses, but it seems like every time we have had an issue, that ends up being, it's the city's fault, the city's hard to work with, is because we allow stuff to go in that's based on pencil drawings. And, and that's our fault. So, so maybe Greg is right, that we need to say, if you're going to come in, and you're going to develop, and you're going to do this, you have to give us something that's drawn by a professional, because it, it makes the city look bad, frustrates the developer, and it just doesn't serve any good purpose. And I would think that, and I don't know if that's an ordinance or just a standard we should just do, I think we ought to consider doing that.
We allow the hand-drawn plans to make it less expensive to do it.
I know that.
But here's the problem, here's the problem with it, Chris.
Oh, we're doing it now? Oh, we started-
These are the hand-drawn drawings? Here's the problem with it, folks. It starts out cheap, and it ends up expensive.
No doubt about it.
I, I want to tell you, and, and I'm sorry that he lost his temper. I've done business in the city of Wentzville. We had an office that was in a building that was seven years old. We added three interior walls, and we had to have a complete set of engineer drawings to do that. Now, that seemed unreasonable to me, but guess what? We didn't have any arguments about where distances were. You had to show them where our water cooler went. And, and I get really tired of hearing how difficult we are to do business with, because I've done business in other cities. And I, I think part of it is we're trying to make it easy, to make it inexpensive, because we realize it does cost money to have engineer drawings and to have a draft and do this work. But I think we start out trying to make it easy, and it ends up being difficult, because it doesn't force the business owner to think through the, all of the issues that we all knew, know are required by our code, not because of Jack's incompetence.
Well, and, yeah, and another, another, along with that issue, you know, we've, we've had, we've had, and we just delegated him more authority, and you're saying that incompetent?
I didn't say, I didn't obviously-
One of the other, one of the other things that, that has come up with these, and I, I agree with these pencil drawings, but the other thing is, when we, we hear about delays going, like, Jack takes them to our engineering firm that we do business with to get approval, and then if they see something wrong, it has to come back to Jack and back to the contractor or whoever. Is there a way to shortcut that? Do we need to have a city engineer or something in order to speed up the process? You know, is that something, Jack? Is that, would that-
I would, I would say that I believe the service GBA provides us, and our turnaround would be hard to match.
Is it?
I would say, yeah.
And if we get a comment review back, it gets to the applicant that day. We email it to them immediately, and we put the hard copy in the mail.
Okay. Because I had heard from, on a couple other occasions, you know, that they say, well, it gets, it gets delayed and that.
Well, they might get the comments back, and then it takes their architect two months to draw some.
Well, but didn't it originally start with hand-drawn plans in that situation?
No, even, even, even regular architect plans, especially now when everybody's busy. If they get a dozen comments back, some of the architects can't touch it for two weeks. I have no control over that. And I would like to add a little more. I'm sort of ashamed they left before they had enough courage to let me have a chance to talk. When we was out at the site, Ms. Folgen's the one that read the tape to us, and we was using the drawing she gave us that did not have any ties to the building. We used the dimension she gave us, the width of the building, and it was two foot short. The revised site plan that you guys just approved two weeks ago, their handwriting, their drawing, they submitted, shows forty feet on the south side of that building. So as competent as I am, the information they gave us, it would not work.
And, and that's the issue. If they'd had a handset, or a professional set of drawings done by Louis and Beatty, then they're verifying their, those drawings as being accurate, and you'd have somebody to go back and-
And the first survey they turned in had a dimension of one corner of the building, but nowhere else. So I contacted Louis Beatty and asked for more information, and that's how we discovered the back corner did not meet the forty-two foot minimum. And there's also an air conditioner on that side, and there's a grass strip, there's all kinds of stuff before you get forty-two feet on the side of that building.
I thought we had that all put to bed that day, but obviously not.
Well, that side of the building is up there.
Well, they clearly didn't understand the revised site plan where it says no parking, because they were in it within days, with several cars and new curb stops. So if it's a no parking area, I don't understand it.
Certainly the question of not returning the phone calls.
I never had a phone call like that.
I didn't get an email.
By the way, Melody, did you have, do you have that last motion? Do you have something semblance of what we-
Authority given to the top of the five inches?
I did not write it down, no, to, to-
Yeah, for about the five inches?
Yeah, but I'm just, I didn't write anything down. I'm hoping she got it. I just wrote down who-
And I'll just say, and I would just like to add that we're trying to get this problem remedied quickly, but I think any recommendations from the city attorney on streamlining this a little bit, and as you said, giving more authority to Jack for these minute issues probably makes a lot of sense.
Okay, then next we have a request for a hundred and eighty-day extension for construction on lot three A and B Villages of Warrior Ridge.
Yes, on October twelfth, two thousand seventeen, a request was filed for a hundred and eighty-day extension for the required start of construction for the proposed individual lot multi-channel development to be located on lot three A and B Villages of Warrior Ridge. And per our code, per section four oh five point two eight six D one, construction of any residence must begin within a hundred and eighty days with the approval of the conditional use permit, or the approval is void. And they were just asking for an extension because they're not ready to start on their home right now.
Let's hear your motions. Make a motion to be approved, the extension.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Costello to approve the one hundred and eighty-day extension on lots A, lot three A and B Villages of Warrior Ridge. Roll call, vote?
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Next, Jack, you got a request for a hundred and day extension on thirty-two at Oakview?
Yes, it's exactly the same thing.
Same thing.
This one, this one is coming up shortly, so while we were addressing the first applicants, we contacted these people, let them know that they're in the same situation. They'd like the extension.
Good idea.
I'd like to extend the request for a hundred and eighty days, approve the request for a hundred and eighty days.
Motion by Alderman Costello to second.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Costello, seconded by Alderman Miller, to approve the request for a hundred and day, a hundred and eighty-day extension, construction on lot thirty-two Oakview Villas and Arlington Condos. Roll call, vote?
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes. Anything else?
That's it, sir.
That's all.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you. Okay, next we got Brad, Brad Boosie Cruz.
Brad, that's not the-
Brad Boosie Cruz, Maintenance and Grounds Director.
Good evening, Board. Do you have my September maintenance report? Grass is still, still growing, growing probably more now, now that it's, with the rain. Still trying to get some other maintenance done. Still got ball going on, still got soccer going on, so we've still got all that going. If there's anything else, I've got a couple things. The new, the gates are on at the new pool park, so you won't be driving back in there anymore. Everything is locked up and will be till we get done. New water fountain and pad's been put up at Binkley Woods. Had that in time for SAF Holland's big party they had up there this past Saturday. We've been doing the grading and cleaning up the new ballpark, getting ready to seed, which we're gonna, hopefully, if everything goes good tomorrow, we're gonna start with that and should have that done by Friday. Get the rest of the, we've got about three-quarters of it graded and cleaned. Lot of debris, roots, rocks, everything that we've been picking up. I think we had six dump truck loads out this last one, and probably have, probably at least four on the neck, next one here. So we'll get that taken out, get that cleaned up, and then see if we can get some seeding going up around the building site. So we'll have that, get some grass growing on that, and kind of hold them banks and stuff there, so see what we can do.
So can I have the key to the gates to-
Nope. Nobody, nobody have the key.
That's my Saturday morning drive.
Ah, you're gonna have to walk. You'd be better off walking. That way it's more help.
What, what are we gonna do, what are we gonna do?
We can take a vote on that.
Yeah, we can vote on. Seriously, what are, what are we gonna do when the park's up and running? Are we gonna lock the park down at night?
Lock, lock, be locked at night.
I mean, that's a huge area.
Yeah. We've got, we've got one way to get into the complex, into the pool, but the rest, rest will, will be locked, just like the rest of our parks are locked up.
But there won't be any ordinance prohibited people from going back there. It'll just be, you can't take a commercial vehicle back there. Because what are, what are the police gonna do, is my question? You know, because that's a huge area to patrol, a very, you know, protected area that you can't really see a lot. So if the gates are locked, what does that prohibit, we gonna prohibit people from being in the park at night, or what's, have we thought through that yet, or?
I, I thought about it. I think we'll give the chief a golf cart.
He wants to mostly be big, so he can catch the golf carts. That's the line.
The plan would be that the park would close at dark.
Okay.
To both vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic, anything past the pool area.
So what are we gonna start, working with the underbrush where the trails are gonna be? Because that hasn't been touched.
The trail, the trail is, is in.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, the trail, the trail was cut in by our other contractor. We're gonna go in and we, there's like five bridges we're gonna have to put in and some other, we have to put mulch down. The trail's been cut.
Oh, okay.
It needs to be cleaned around.
Cleaned around it, but the trail itself is cut through there.
Because it's, it doesn't look like it's visible from the road.
Uh, yeah, it's pretty visible if you go out there. I mean, it's, you-
I would drive out there to see it, but I can't get in the park.
You're gonna have to walk, you're gonna have to walk. Walk in, you'll see it.
I don't understand that walk.
It's against my nature.
Any other questions or comments for Brad?
No.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is approve the resolution, accepting a proposal for underwriting.
I'd like to introduce a reading and passage of resolution number three twenty-three.
Motion by Alderman Costello, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
A resolution-
A resolution of the City of Warrantz, Missouri, accepting a proposal for underwriting, selecting an underwriter in connection with the proposed issuance by the City of its general obligation bond series two thousand seventeen and acknowledging certain matters pursuant to MSRB rules.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Now, at that time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schultz to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We stand adjourned.